Okay, we're recording.
Thank you. Uh, welcome to the July seventeenth, twenty twenty-five meeting of the Brookline School Committee. We have a very short agenda. Uh, first item on, first I'll, I'll note that item three B is not going to be voted tonight. We didn't get the additional material that, um, folks had requested, so that's going to get deferred until, um, we're able to get the material that I think Mariah had asked for on, um, item three B. So first, uh, one A, the consent agenda. Somebody want to move the minutes from Monday? Andy moves them? Sarah second?
I'll second it.
Jesse seconds. Bob, how do you vote?
I had just a question about the minutes. Are we going to discuss it or just voting?
Uh, we can discuss. Does you have a, if, if you had a question on the minutes, we probably should discuss it first before we vote. Yes.
So, um, in the first section, at the end of the first paragraph, I mean, I just got to this little later today, so I couldn't send it to, uh, Betsy in time. I apologize. Where it talks about, um, the curriculum subcommittee was asked to schedule time to review any curriculum created as part of the genocide education grant. Um, in, in the, in the genocide education grant, if that's discussing the one that finance and we voted on like this week, last week, there is no curricular development really in there. It's really stipends for teachers and the Calcar exhibit, so I'm not, I think what we meant was that besides the, that grant, there are, there is curricula that's going to be used. It may exist already. And what we were asking to do was schedule time to review the existing curricula, because I'm not sure that they're going to be generating new curriculum unless maybe facing history and ourselves through the consulting costs are going to be presenting the district with updated materials.
So why don't I make those changes and then we can bring the minutes back, get another meeting? I'll make it clear.
Thank you, Betsy. We'll bring them back. Um, next on the agenda, we have the introduction of candidate for interim deputy superintendent of teaching and learning. Dr. Robin, uh, I'm going to apologize if I pronounce it Benoit, um, and Ms. Wong is going to do the introduction for us.
Thank you. So I'm very excited to, um, introduce Dr. Robin Benoit to you. Um, she is my recommendation for their appointment, so I am seeking your approval of this recommendation. I, there, there were some questions received from the members about the process and everything's a little different. Um, as we transition from last year to, to the next year. Um, so this was posted as an interim deputy superintendent for teaching and learning. The, it was posted, um, at, in May through the start of June, and then there was a second posting. Um, Dr. Susan Givens, um, is the one that worked with, um, getting the posting up and I and it was clear the interest was to involve people that were part of the teaching and learning department before they departed. That being said, um, that the then deputy superintendent, Jody Fortuna, was not involved. You're generally not involved in the search for your own position, so she wasn't. And then Linus, um, Guillory also wasn't involved. Um, Karen, um, Karen Schmcler, I'm sorry, yes, Schmcler, um, who's interim and, and actually would have been welcome to participate, but she wasn't available. So that left Susan Givens as the central office person, um, to be involved in sort of overseeing the search. Um, she extended an invitation to the, to the curriculum coordinators and principals, whoever would be interested. And so all the people that ended up doing the screening interviews um, were people who had volunteered, so no one was turned away. So we had the curriculum coordinator for ELA, the curriculum coordinator for science, and the K through twelve curriculum coordinator for visual arts participated. Um, Principal Vanessa Belaylo. I know, you feel free to correct me if I mispronounce her last name. Vanessa was, um, involved. And they had the opportunity to include both senior directors of TNL before they left. So they also participated. This screening committee, um, along with Susan Givens reviewed the applications. They invited some people to come in to interview. And then out of the group that they selected for interview, they put them aside ready for my attention when I, um, started in the district July one. So it was waiting for me July one. And what they did is they screened the applicants for people who they felt were qualified, eligible to serve the role. And then, um, and so then I looked over that, that, um, that set and decided to invite one back for a finalist interview, and so you have Robin Benoit here. Um, I reached out to the people who were on the screening committee and they saw, you know, this is now July. They very generously all came to participate, except of course, the prior, um, senior directors of teaching learning that were no longer on staff, but everyone else came. And then Anthony Meyer joined this time. He was invited in the, in the screening portion, but he just wasn't, he, it didn't fit in his schedule, so he was able to join us. So we have Vanessa, we had, um, Anthony Meyer, we had, um, Susan Givens again, and the three curriculum coordinators that participated before, and this time I was able to join. Um, we, we, I, I'll say, the finalist interview, we, we asked a lot, everything. And so, um, so I thank Dr. Benoit, because I think she ended up staying with us almost ninety minutes in that interview. Um, after Dr. Benoit left, I, we all talked as a team. And, um, people were unanimous in their consensus on, um, on bringing forth or forwarding Robin into the next step. So I personally called all the references. Typically, I am the role of superintendent, I'm the one that will call all the reference checks for a senior cabinet appointment. So I went ahead and did that. Um, in this case, I knew two of the references really well, so that was helpful. And, um, and I felt that I, um, because I know them, that, that their recommendation was all the more trustworthy. Um, the thing that really stuck out, um, in Dr. Benoit's application was the strength of the references. So they, um, really high on her ability to work with people, very high on her emotional intelligence. And what appealed to me about her resume, which you have a copy of, it, it's nice to have someone with a middle school core, um, in a, in a K through twelve position as, as this. Also, she is also, um, certified to be a special ed administrator. So that is a, that's kind of a nice thing for the deputy superintendent of teaching and learning to have that certification as well. Um, it sort of supports collaboration between TNL and OSS ultimately. Um, she has never been at this level um, at the cabinet level for, for teaching and learning, but she's had experience in a lot of different of the components that fall under this. And also, we were very interested in someone who had experience with implementing a new curriculum, because that's a, that's a major focus of TNL this year, the implementation of the literacy program, and she also has prior experience in doing that. Um, the, a, and as I said, she has these different pieces. Um, there are obvious, you probably are well aware of this, um, but we have Kristen Gray, who's very strong and very up to speed on the implementation of, of the literacy. So the other part I kind of liked is that she comes from a background of, of math, science, and STEM. So it's a balance to, to the work that a lot of people invested time with, and then she also has that background. Um, so I think, so I, I should just say, she was, she's been a middle school principal in, in Mendon Upton, director of instructional design, um, also associate principal at the Harvard Public Schools. And, um, in the Shobor Regional School District, she served several um, roles, pre-K twelve STEM coordinator, middle school standards-based reporting system development coordinator. And she also worked on development of the advisory pilot. So you can see that all those components that she had leadership roles are all relevant to the, to this, to the broader scope of the deputy superintendent of teaching and learning. So I'm excited. She's here. She's here. And, um, excited for you to, 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 um, answer questions as you may. And, um, and also to remind you, this is an interim, a posting for an interim position.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments from the committee? Mariah?
Thank you. Hello, Dr. Benoit, welcome. Um, I'm just wondering if you could talk a little bit about, um, sort of your in plans as interim for the role, what you've been thinking about, or any other sort of context you want to, um, give to us, um, eh, at this point in time?
Well, I think that I'm really excited to hit the ground running. I think it'll be a lot of listening and learning to start, um, getting particularly where we are in July and understanding that although the summer seems long sometimes, um, it's really short. And so there's a lot of work that needs to be done probably before the school year begins, I would, I would gather, um, and particularly given what's going on with the Department of Teaching and Learning. So my first steps will be connecting with all of the coordinators and the principals and understanding from their perspective, like, you know, what's out there, what do we need, and kind of creating a map of, of all of the initiatives that are going on and what we might need to do as next steps and, um, what I need to be, get myself up to speed with and what we need to put in motion. So I think it, for me, my first step is just that hit the ground running. I am really excited about the opportunity to lead in a transition year and support Superintendent Wong um, as she goes through the year and, um, and understanding that this is a pivotal year for the Brookline Public Schools, so.
Suzanne?
Yeah, thank you, Val. Thank you, Dr. Benoit, for joining us on a summer evening. Um, I'm wondering, I think I read that you did some work on a strategic plan and
Yes, I was part of, as Harvard-
One of your districts.
I don't know, you're freezing a little bit. I did work on the strategic plan in the Harvard Public Schools. Um, I was part of that team that developed their current strategic plan. Um, so as part of that year, year-long work with members of the community and other members of the, the public schools in envisioning what our strategic plan was going to look like moving forward. I think they're now in year three of implementation.
So, yeah, I apologize. I'm up in New Hampshire. My, uh, internet's not great at the lake. Um, I'm just wondering if you've had a chance to look at our strategic plan and if you have any thoughts about that?
Um, I have, I don't have it in front of me, um, at the moment. Um, but certainly I have a strong belief in that strategic plan really should be guiding the work that we're doing, and we're constantly checking in on it. Um, and I, I think that, you know, certainly as we move through the year, that's something that, um, I'll be working to see where we are and where we need to go um, with that strategic plan.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, and then Bob?
Hi, Dr. Benoit, it's great to meet you. And I was wondering if you could walk us through a little bit of a rollout of a curriculum, like other than the purchase of the curriculum, what are the other pieces that you see that we'll be gearing up for?
Well, as I said, I think one of the things, just from my past experience, as you're rolling out any new curriculum, there's the learning that has to happen and the support for teachers, because the purchase is one thing, and then people have things in their hands. They probably, I'm going to assume as they were piloting, there's some familiarity, familiarity um, for people, but really in that first year of any new curriculum, that resources that you're working with, you know, there are growing pains with it. You're trying things for the first time. There's typically so much, um, that teachers have at their fingertip and understanding how to use that, how to use things with integrity. Um, so it's really a year of learning alongside. So I really envision working with the ELA coordinator and the principals to really think about what teachers need, and that might be slightly different at different grade levels or different schools. Um, to ensure they have what they need along the road of that first year of implementation. The other piece of that is communication with the community. Um, because again, you know, depending on where students are in their journey, if they've gotten, if parents and FAMP students are used to seeing things look a certain way within their ELA curriculum or their resources, or just even the things that are coming home. There's also that piece of bringing the community along with any new resources that you're using so that they understand, and then they, they understand what their child is bringing home to them. Um, so I think, you know, just in my experience in the past, those are really critical, important pieces of thinking about particularly that first year, um, of the implementing, implementation of any new curriculum.
Thank you. Bob?
Yeah, thank you. Hi, Robin.
Hi.
I'm Bob Weintraub. Um, I have two questions, okay?
Okay.
So you're looking at, at, uh, becoming a, a pretty powerful and important leader in our school community. Um, can you talk a little bit about the components of leadership that you think are essential, uh, to being successful as a leader? What are the, what are the elements of leadership that you value?
I think I have, I lead from a foundation of relationships and listening, and I think those are critical components of who I am as have been as a leader in any position that I've had, including, you know, thinking about teacher leadership roles. So across my thirty-year career, um, twenty of which were spent in the, in the classroom and in teacher leader roles, just that really, that foundational piece of relationships and really understanding what people need um, is an important piece. I think another piece of, you know, just for me, as I think about, you know, beyond the relational piece, there's that kind of strategic thinking, that ability to communicate strongly, um, and clearly. Um, and that ability to get, engage in dialogue, I think is really important, so that communication piece. Um, and I also think that in terms of that leadership piece, particularly in a role such as this, it's kind of taking all the components and really thinking about um, how they work together to make sure that your, you know, that the system is working, right? So that you're bringing everybody along, along with. And so I, I think while, for me, this is a position, I have, I have not held this position before, and it is moving to scale. I've worked in, um, smaller districts in the past, but I think one of the things that that has helped me as a leader understand is that I've worn a lot of hats. So when you work in a really small place, you have a few people wearing a lot of hats. And, eh, you know, I think that, and I've held a lot of different positions in that, it kind of helps me understand the parts. And so I think that is a critical piece, is being able to put on different lenses and understand different perspectives and understand the needs of others to bring it together, to have a vision that moves forward.
Okay, thank you. My other question has to do with, um, as you think over your personal, professional life, who have, who have been your inspirations, who have been your intellectual mentors, who have been people who really made a difference in your life, um, both personally and professionally?
Um, so first and foremost, I think of Ted Sizer. As a young teacher, I had the opportunity to work at the Francis W. Parker Charter Central School in its first years through its first graduating class. Ted was actually, Ted and Nancy were my, my principals. And so, you know, I don't even think I really understood at the time how, um, powerful that was for me, but that became the core of who I was as an educator, and it has influenced who I am as a leader and how I interact within school communities. So, because community is such a strong component of that work and that understanding that every child is known well, and every child should have the opportunity to use their mind well, so, or at the core. Um, they are so, so Ted and, and Nancy were really, um, important mentors for me within my career. And, um, pivotal at a very, you know, in my early twenties, as I was first learning, learning to be a teacher. Um, so that was really important. Um, certainly, eh, along the way, there have been very, various leaders that have taken the time to invest in me. Um, and I think that's really important, and I've used that in terms of thinking about myself as a leader and how I invest in others um, in ensuring that, um, I'm really looking at my whole school community, right? So, you know, great thoughts can come from everywhere, and that's a, you know, an important, um, piece. So a number of different leaders in different capacities, I feel, have mentored and nurtured me. Um, certainly, um, as I went through, um, my doctoral program, my advisor um, has been really important, was really important for me and maintains, uh, you know, I consider him a mentor still, um, yeah, uh, you know, beyond my doctoral program. Um, and, um, I is, is somebody that I'm in contact with regularly. Um, and so I, when I think about, you know, those are thought partners, and then along the way, I feel like I've, I've built a very nice network of colleagues that the, again, those relationships are important to me, and so that I have a lot of thought, thought partners in the work that I do that, um, I feel like I can connect with and call on, um, when I need to problem solve or I need a sounding board. So, um, I really appreciate that. And so that I, I understanding of the importance of community thought partners for me.
You, thank you, Emma.
Jesse?
Oh, I think-
You're on mute, Jesse.
Thanks for saving me, Mariah. Hi, Robin, um, Jesse here. So this year, we're going through contract negotiations, and I wondered if you could speak a little bit in the context of what you talked about in terms of collaboration with, um, staff and also being the guy, the guiding, um, leader for teaching community within the schools. Uh, what experience you have in the past in dealing through this kind of a, con, you know, sort of a complex year different than others? Where teachers are going to have their mind on teaching, and they're also their mind on a potential, maybe even a work stoppage or something along those lines, and how you might, you know, um, I'm sure you'll put your shoulder to the burden, but how, how would you like, um, approach that kind of a complex relationship? Have you done it before? And would that work well for us in terms of managing what could be a very turbulent year on the teaching side?
Um, I think, you know, for me as a building leader, um, I've always had a strong relationship with my union members, but that doesn't mean we've always agreed. And so I think you start there, particularly in negotiations that can, you know, they can become contentious. Um, I've been part of the negotiating team as an administrator, an administrator at the table. And that can be hard sometimes, because, you know, you're both coming at at an issue, you're trying to settle a contract that's, that's fair for the community and fair for, for those at whichever contract that you're negotiating. Um, and I think the important piece there is coming with calm and, and listening and really being able to hear and, you know, kind of meeting together on that. Um, I think helps when it's contentious. It doesn't mean that it's always easy, uh, or it's always pretty. Um, certainly, I've been through some not pretty, um, negotiations as a, as a teacher and as a leader, but, you know, I think I, you know, most recently, um, was a member of the negotiating team for my district um, as an administrator, and, and that's one of the things that I think helped us get to an agreed-upon, um, contract was just that willingness to come together, willingness to listen, willingness to kind of consider, consider, um, both sides.
Thank you.
Can you speak about your experience working with educators on tier one and tier two interventions?
Yes, um, so that's a place where at the building level, we've been working for the last couple of years in my current district and with, with teachers and really helping them strengthen, you know, what tier one looks like. And for some, that, it's really kind of reconsidering some practices. So I, I think that it's, it's not a quick fix. It doesn't happen overnight, but I think again, you have to, you know, think, you know, think clearly about, part of it is knowing what instruction currently looks like across classrooms, where are places where people need support. I think you also need to be willing to hear from teachers where they need um, more professional learning in an area, um, particularly as you're trying to shift practices at that tier one and tier two and think about them flexibly, right? That, I think that that's one of the, the mind shifts for people, right? Because they think about like, you know, a student needs help, it's not always going someplace. It's like thinking about all of the flexible options that we can have to support a student and that, you know, moving between, you know, those tier one needs and those tier two needs, it's not a place necessarily, and it's not a permanent place necessarily, even. It's like, okay, I need help with this right now. What can we do to help Robin? Um, as a student and, and, you know, alongside everybody else. So I think that's thinking about how they work together on it. And I, you know, so for me, that's a place where I've been, um, supporting teachers at the building level for the last couple of years.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Um, I'm trying to figure out how to raise my hand, but I, if I could speak.
Superintendent Wong?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just, I just thought it might be appropriate to say more at this juncture where we are. Um, my coming in and inviting a new interim into the cabinet level, um, to join the other cabinet leaders. Um, former deputy superintendent Jody Fortuna left, um, a very, like a very comprehensive transition plan. So we do have that to guide us, and each of the senior directors also left behind transition plans. Um, we do have new job descriptions, and we have the job description for, um, the former one for the deputy super, former deputy superintendent. My thinking is, as we bring, if we hopefully were able to bring Dr. Benoit on, we have posted for a, our replacement senior director. And depending on the strengths that we might, we might draw in that posting, we may rebalance the job description to the strengths of the two new people that we have. So we're, we're really staying flexible and just, um, trying to best utilize what's in front of us and the, and the capabilities that might present themselves. Um, but I do want to assure you that transition plans were, were left. Um, we have a good, we have a very good idea of all the things that need to be done, and we are in the process making sure that all those parts are being covered. Um, I also want to say that, um, I consider it such a priv- privilege to mentor someone in their first year, so I look forward to that opportunity. Um, it's just, uh, it's a really, it, it's, it's just a great chance to work with someone and lay the groundwork, um, for their future career a, at that level. And, uh, and honestly, people are just the most receptive in the beginning, so it's a lot of fun. Anyway, so, thank you.
Thank you. Donna and then Carolyn, and then I think we're going to vote.
Thanks so much. Um, Superintendent Wong, I also wanted to take, take a moment just to thank you for hitting the ground running. I know it probably wasn't easy, but we appreciate, um, the really rapid turnaround on this. And I've appreciated hearing Hager thinking about the position, um, and what your process was. Um, I do have just a quick question for you. Was this, was this posted as a year-long interim position, or we?
It, it was just posted as a interim position. Yes, so it doesn't, doesn't necessarily sunset, but I would expect you're likely to sunset and then, and then post for a permanent position.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Benoit, I have a question if I could. Um, I'm so thrilled to hear that you had, um, have experience with implementing curriculum. Um, I think my question applies to other subject areas beyond literacy, but given where we are, I'll focus my question on literacy. Um, in a recent presentation, I think it was at the, probably at one of our final meetings, um, of the school year, uh, we heard from the Office of Teaching and Learning that curriculum coordinators may not have the bandwidth to fully support implementation. Um, there was a discussion about, or my question to them was around professional learning. And my feeling that professional learning is only as effective as its ongoing follow-through, and it should be sustained by um, coaching and ongoing observation and continuous training. So I'm wondering if you can speak um, to how you think about who is, who is accountable for ensuring fidelity um, of implementation and how you think about fidelity of implementation, what indicators or processes you look for to ensure that what's happening in the classroom aligns with the instructional goals?
So when I think about, try to get all of the components of your, of your question. So thinking about that ongoing support for teachers, certainly laying the groundwork for it, and then that also means involving your principals. Um, and so, you know, is, they're the ones that are closest to the classrooms in their individual schools, working with the coordinators, myself being in classrooms and, um, being at schools and understanding what that looks like. So certainly, as I've gone through a first year in the past, it really is taking those temperature checks and being the, the being in the classroom is important in understanding where people are having difficulty and also having time to hear from teachers, and a lot of that may happen at the school level um, to find out where they're struggling and then target your support throughout that first year to help with that, um, kind of maintaining. And I always think about it in terms of integrity versus fidelity. Um, because I think fidelity, sometimes teachers get this, like, everything has to be exact, but integrity is- Integrity is thinking about, particularly when you're talking about resources that have many parts to them, right? And it's almost. You know, as teachers are constructing lessons, you want to ensure that they are maintaining integrity in terms of the flow of the lessons, that they're using the resources appropriately. And they know how to use the resources appropriately. So you're looking at all of those parts. And so that's why I think about it in terms of integrity versus. Fidelity of just like, we're gonna adhere. So you, we want our resources to be flexible for teachers, but we want to ensure that they know how to use them appropriately. And then they, that follow-through that they are using them in the way, manner in which they were intended. And following that scope and sequence. So I think for me, you know, from this, the lens of this position, it's actually. It's kind of a web of support that kind of makes sure that that's happening. Because one person can't be everywhere all the time. So it's that constant communication with all of those other. People that are all working toward the same thing, but at the, at the end of the day, it also, it means being. Hearing from teachers and being in classrooms to ensure that you have what you need.
And so what would you, what indicators would you use or have you used to? To determine how the integrity of the implementation is?
So I think that it's kind of, you know, what I, and I don't know if I have your question exactly right, but thinking about. Having shared understanding of what are, what are we looking for when we go into classrooms? What are some of the, you know, what are, so it's immense, that's a, an observation checklist or a, a guide that helps you kind of look for. That you're looking for so that regardless of who's going in, you're looking for the same thing. Sometimes you're doing those walkthroughs together. So those are those indicators. That yes, we're seeing what we should see or no, we're not seeing what we should see, kind of tells you where to, to, and then you're also looking at. I was looking at student outcomes in the past, right? So we're looking at how are kids actually doing on some of those benchmark pieces that go alongside it. That you're taking to dipsticks. So you're looking at student work that would also let indicate. You know, what's being done along the way. So those are just. Offhand, a couple of the things that I would be looking for or looking to support people with.
Thanks, Dr. Benoit. Carolyn, and then I'll entertain a motion.
Thanks, and thank you, Dr. Benoit for being here, taking the time and I'll also. Second what Donna just said, Bella, I really appreciate. That sort of context and, and catching us up with what the process has been. That was information that. At least I didn't have, so it's, it's just really helpful. To understand how we got here and also great appreciation for you getting us to this point so, so quickly. With a strong candidate. Thank you. I have a question that's really sort of a curiosity question. I don't have a right or wrong answer in my mind. Just wondering, and it may be more for you, Bella, whether with an interim position, I'm hearing the obvious, there's gonna be. Emphasis on the ELA rollout. Is there anything that's sort of? That, that sort of there's less of or more of. Within, as you're thinking about this position.
Sure, and to be clear, it, it was designated, I came into the district with it already designated to be interim, so, so. I can't speak to the decision of that necessarily. But in this world, this is where Dr. Benoit's coming in and we posted the other senior director position and we'll see because other than. The literacy implementation, there's, there's like supervision evaluation, there's mentoring coaching and there will be. Professional development, how that rolls out. And to Suzanne's question about how we are forwarding elements of the strategic plan. So the, and then the other important area is the data. How we rolling the data and how we, how, how, when everything's been restructured. Actually, we're in process of restructuring. So like how we, who's gonna be responsible for, for rolling out the data? And for any analysis of it. That is not an exclusive list of everything that falls under the umbrella of the deputy superintendent for teaching and learning, but those are the big things. That are non-negotiable items that we need to make sure. We have someone in charge and a plan to, to oversee and implement.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Bella, what's the date that we are making this appointment effective? Is it Monday? Is it tomorrow?
We were hoping she could start tomorrow. But if you're not comfortable with that, then we'll just, but she's scheduled for meetings tomorrow. And I, I know she was answering questions, but we, she hasn't really seen a lot of the material yet.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept. Doctor, sorry, Superintendent Wong's recommendation of appointing. Dr. Robin Benoit interim superintendent, interim deputy superintendent for teaching and learning for the public schools of Brookline. Who seconded? Sorry. Carolyn second? Okay. Bob, how do you vote?
Yes.
Andy?
Yes.
Jesse?
Yes.
Mariah?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I vote yes as well. Thank you, Dr. Benoit and get your contract executed and get you going tomorrow. Welcome, welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you both. And next on our agenda is the draft memorandum of agreement with Brookline Recreation for the transition of base. Brookline Adult and Community Ed. It's discussion and possible vote, and I want to thank Mariah for working really hard. With our counterparts in REC to get this agreement where it is. Looks in amazing shape to me and love Mariah for you to just go over the highlights for folks.
Sure. Betsy, do you mind pulling it up on the screen? And while we do that, I just wanna note that Tim Davis, who's the director of REC is, has also joined us. He's waving and I think Kenny is here. Yep, there's Kenny as well. Specifically, if there's any questions that come up related to music extension program. So just to give a quick overview, in the spring when we were talking about this, many of us discussed, you know. We, we wanted to have base continue and wouldn't it be great if we could partner with the rec? And at that time I reached out. And we had multiple meetings, particularly with Tim and with. His, is this, is Aaron the assistant director? Tim? Yeah, assistant director. Just want to make his, his, get sure his title right. With Michelle McGlone, who is the PSB base director. And just to see what the possibilities were and, and how it might work. Since then. Tim had those, saw some of the data from base as it exists now and has talked to that team and. REC is very excited to be able to bring some of the programming or the programming from base over into. Their portfolio. And so it was a very collaborative process to sort of create this document. I will say that this document is actually. The second in our collaborative creative process. The first document, which is not quite done yet, but we're, we're also working on PSB staff. Led by Susan in particular, working with building principals and other key staff. Are working on the facilities document, which is referenced in this document, so. For quite some time, there was. Memos basically talking about the collaboration between REC and PSB because. PSB has provided access to its gyms, for example, in exchange for REC providing access to its playing fields. And so there has been a long-term collaboration and sharing of facilities, but that document is quite out of date. And so the work was started. A couple of years ago, but then trailed off to get that refreshed. And now we are at it like full speed ahead, trying to get that document nailed down. And then this is complimentary to that. So this is really focusing on the base activities. In the middle of all of our conversations, Tim saw one of our meetings when we were talking about music extension as well and the transition of music extension and said. Hey, I think that REC could also help. Support that program in the way that base had. He and Kenny met along with Aaron as well and talked through those details. Right now, we've set that up as a one-year, I can't remember, is the whole document a one-year pilot or just that section? Just that section, right? Sorry, I can't remember.
I believe it's, it's relative to just that one section.
Okay, that's what I thought. Thank you. And so the idea being that we'll set that up as a pilot, but it would be great to have that collaboration work as well. So I guess I will just say that. A lot of this is really just saying that we are handing over base. That REC is really responsible for the financial, for the decisions relating to that, right? They're gonna steward the program, maintain. The base. Legacy within the town and provide that. Not necessarily the exact mix of programming, but the types of programming that have been offered. And they will really be the, the caretakers of this going forwards. Tim, is there anything else I missed that you want to mention?
Uh, no, I, I, I will just say, I want to say thank you just off the bat for allowing us this opportunity to take on and as Mariah pointed out. You know, continue the legacy of base and the programming that's still important to the community that has gone through adult ed and community ed. For many years, recreation and, and base have collaborated and I think have respected each other's, you know. Sidewalks to make sure that base does everything and gets everything that they need while recreation focuses on the priorities that we have. And really what this agreement is, is just that, that opportunity to continue, but also to allow recreation to continually expand our services to the community. And doing so with a program based that is well established that we can, again, continue for the community. This was a extremely collaborative effort. It was, you know, the amount of individuals I've been able to meet for the school department has been tremendous. The teachers, the instructors, the staff. This didn't happen in a vacuum. This happened, as Mariah said, over a couple of months. Meeting with various parties. So we're very confident in what we have here. Our department's very confident in bringing this on and seeing this continue and hopefully flourish. And just, you know, here tonight to answer any questions, any concerns and look for the support so we can get rolling.
Penny, do you want to add anything?
I just, first of all, I agree with everything that Tim said about the collaborative nature and Mariah as well. We really talked through this a lot. When Mariah mentioned the idea to me initially of collaborating with REC. I was both excited and entered the meeting with, as I said to Mariah, a healthy dose of skepticism, just to make sure we were doing the right thing. And really, Tim and Aaron, as I also said to Mariah, won me over with how thorough they were and how committed to students they were. And that has always been, you know, my kind of north star is advocating for students, advocating for. Students who otherwise couldn't afford lessons, which doesn't only include our low-income students, which, which it does, we do serve a. A, a large number of low-income students, but it also includes many of the families who are kind of in that middle income class where. Private lessons for instruments are still very expensive and we've worked really hard to keep. Lesson price down for everyone in addition to offering financial assistance to those who need it. And Tim and Aaron demonstrated that they were totally committed to that, totally students first. We did talk about doing this as a one-year pilot, kind of reassessing because, you know, we want to make sure things are going well. And I think just one thing that I want to highlight for the school committee and also Bella and Robin is that. Music extension, which is a program that we offer after-school private instrument lessons is part of our, is part of our performing arts curriculum in the public schools of Brookline. So it's, it's a curricular program. It's an extension of our, of our curriculum, of our band and orchestra programs, which are very robust. And it is a way of, while it's not required for every student, many students take these lessons. And it is a way of not only. Enhancing the learning of those students who are in the lessons, but it really brings up the level of everyone in the group, just to have more students who are taking lessons in our. Very robust orchestras and, and bands and we. Even when base took this on, which, which is after when I started in this position, it was fully run in the performing arts department. And at a certain point, we had base take over some of the managerial aspects of it, but in the performing arts department, we always kept. Kind of our lens on all the didactic elements of the program that run from hiring teachers, that I do all the hiring. I do all of the talk with the teachers about curriculum. I don't evaluate teachers in the same way I do with school day teachers, but if there are ever issues about the curriculum that come up. But first initially just discussing the curriculum with, with teachers that we hire and then ongoing things throughout the year. And if there's ever also behavioral issues, teachers will come to me and that, that stuff I see and yet there is a huge managerial piece, just to give you. A sense, we had two hundred and seven private lessons this year, weekly private lessons, so two hundred and seven students in. In private lessons at all of our elementary schools. So it's, it's a lot to manage and. REC, again, just really demonstrated how well they could do that while also being committed to the essence of the program. So that is a long way of getting to that this is a collaboration, that it's a curricular program of the. Public schools of Brookline that is gonna be in collaboration with REC as it was a curricular program that was in collaboration with base. And so I think that makes it unique in the MOU or, or the MOA, sorry, that, you know, we are. It, I think it's the only program that is like that in the MOA. So we really spent a lot of time hashing all that out and I think where we landed is. You know, something that we all feel good about.
Belle, I'm sorry to interrupt. My computer's about to die. I'm not near a charger. I vote yes on this. And I probably won't be able to get back in the meeting. I'm sorry.
Thanks, Bob.
I'm sorry. Take care, everybody.
Just so you, just so everyone knows, part of the reason that we are bringing this agreement in advance even or not alongside the facilities agreement is that. Because of the planning that's required for the fall, we need to get, especially for the music extension program in particular. The REC team and the. And Kenny need to start coordinating. These activities and letting, letting families know or letting the adults of children know how the. Registration will be going and so forth. And they'd like to get that going, obviously, in the relatively near future and then in, let's say, two to three weeks. Oh, go ahead. Is that not?
Just add, assuming this passes today, Tim, Aaron and I have a meeting at nine AM tomorrow.
Okay, so.
Hopefully, we don't have to cancel that meeting.
The bit to make sure that they're all squared away with all of the planning that needs to happen and any modifications that need to happen to the REC registration system to be able to handle. You know, all the, all the, the different processes that need to happen. So that's why we're bringing this ahead of the other document, but hopefully the other document will be following, I would say in the next six weeks would be an ideal outcome.
Thanks, Mariah. Andy?
Yeah, so thanks very much, Mariah and Kenny and Tim for your work on this. My question is for Tim. Are you able at this point to give us a sense of, like, at what level will the adult ed piece of base be, be operating in the coming year? Like, is there gonna be, need to be a period of like reassessment or rebuilding or are you expecting to actually sort of have registration and run courses as usual?
Yeah, so our intention right now and kind of our game plan and map where it is, so this is going to involve bringing on more staff on our end. As you would imagine, being such a, a big portfolio of programs. So once this is, you know, hopefully executed tonight, we're gonna start that process of bringing on the necessary staff that we need to get this going. Our intention outside of music extension, as, as Kenny said, you know, we're probably gonna start that tomorrow, hopefully. Is we're gonna, we're gonna focus on, in, in the fall, there's gonna be programming right off of that in the fall. It's going to align with the rest of our rec programming, but we're gonna focus on a gradual build-out, on a build-up. So we will focus on the, the more popular, for, for lack of better words, the most requested program. So. Continuing the photography, ceramics, woodworking, kind of arts and crafts. You, programming that happens at the UAB, things that are, that we have, you know, teachers that we've talked to, kind of waiting in the wings and ready to jump in. So programs that we're confident that we can kind of hit the ground running with. And then with that, in the fall, taking the fall, we'll probably be looking at a, like a larger build-out in the winter, gradually in the spring until we feel like we're at a level. That is appropriate for the staff that we have and to make, you know, the, the program work for our department. So. It's not gonna be apples to apples when we look at the, the offerings. But we're gonna, you know, take our time, we're gonna be strategic, we're gonna be intentional on the things that we're putting out. So we're not, you know, putting the cart before the horse and, and we're doing it appropriately.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Before we go to Jesse, can I just say that, just to highlight that the programs that Tim mentioned that are the most popular. As he said, use the UA building and that is not a, a building that's currently in the facilities agreement between PSB and REC. And so that's why really, as one of many reasons, we need to get that other document also in place. Sorry, that's just my one addition.
Thanks, Jesse.
Yeah, th- thank you. So I, in reading through the document, it. Yeah, tha- thank you. Um, so I in reading through the document, uh it's just amazing. Thank you, Mariah, for helping to move this through. This is a very collaborative looking, covers like sort of everything. I did have a question in um. Um, related to the financials, so there's some section that talks about data and 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 sharing or something. Either it's the beginning of four or five, and it sort of leaves it open as to what will happen and yeah, I think it's the lower down. Um, keep going, yeah, five. So I think one of the things that happened this past year was that we sort of sort of got surprised at some point. As we began to hear that base was running out of funds. And so my question, and and there's also another comment in here about if if it doesn't work out. PSB is gonna take um uh music extension back immediately kind of thing. So there's something like costs associated with, of course, not that that should happen, but there was costs associated with bringing it back. Um, and you know. I'm not sure has, you know, spare resources financially to do that. The other thing is, is that um in general, what's the plan? I guess, uh as Mariah is on the financial side, for the school committee being comprised on some regular basis as to how financially this is working. I mean, I just heard Tim say about bringing on more staff. I'm assuming that's on the rec side. Was that budgeted? Or is that gonna be paid out of base uh revenue?
So the the, let me, so rec is taking over. Betsy, do you mind going to section two? Cause this is um, yep, sorry, if you can go up. So rec is taking over, uh, there we go. Um, all of the funds are being managed by recreation, so PSB has no role in um managing that. And there's a couple of reasons for that, but one I'll I'll note is rec is funded through a revolving fund and those funds are taken in through a revolving fund and as. People, I believe, know revolving funds need to be expended for the for the purpose for which those revenues were. Like, right, were taken, and so um it would be very challenging for um those revenues to then come back to, for example, to PSB. So we tried to set this up in a way that did not co-mingle funds because that would be really, really complicated. Um, and so as you see the bullets there, um, uh. Basically say recreation is managing all of it. If there's a profit, they manage it. If there's a loss, they manage it. They are gonna handle all of that. Now, the one exception, and I want Betsy, do you mind scrolling down now to four point five, I think it is? Or so, oh no, it's four point two, I think. Um, yeah, the second bullet. So if, so music extension is not designed to make money necessarily. We all talked to a couple of weeks ago, if you recall, at finance subcommittee, when we discussed the um. The revised um, um. Non-aligned compensation and program fees that we were adjusting and really how all of us have the goal to. Offer a program that meets the area of um lowest possible cost for um the students who are participating while also. Being sure, ensuring that we can maintain um high-quality uh teaching staff in the program. And so the goal would be that it's not necessarily, it's not gonna be a moneymaker, but hopefully it's not gonna lose money either, right? And so um any revenue, though, that's retained would stay in the recreation department revolving fund. Um, and it could be reinvested into MEP. One of the things that Kenny mentioned, well Kenny, do you want to talk about your idea? I don't want to take your. Right away from your idea that you had, just as like if there is some small profits, what could happen with it?
Yeah, we, I mean, originally when we met, um when Tim and Aaron and I met, uh we talked about ways of. You know, ideally, the program grows and and I think one of the things, you know, our program has run between. At two, I I'd say a hundred and fifty students in a year at a low point to about three hundred students a year at a high point. That's majority fifth through eighth graders, although there's some younger and some older students in it. And um we talked about ways to enhance the program, such as one of the things that many of our music extension teachers would love to do is have. Recitals with their students, and we've never done that. So it there was, you know, just as one idea could be, if there is some extra money, eh, there would be. Um, funding to pay those music extension teachers. You know, just pay them their hourly rate for a few hours to run a recital with their students at the end. Yeah, and that that often happens in private music studios and it's just not something that we've had the bandwidth to do. So that's an example of something that with. Uh, you know, what we we're looking at as will be an enhancement, working with rec are things that we might have the bandwidth to do.
Now, Mariah, on the other, the other piece um had to do with uh agreement coming up on the use of the facilities. So is that, is that basically like a sort of say like a barter system? Bartering in that we give them space, they give us.
Yes, that's basically it.
No dollars really.
No dollars exchanged, and if we ever got into that, oh my God, it would be, I think, like, when you see this other document and you see the level of complexity. That it goes into it, that's being mapped out, um because as you can imagine. Um, and the other thing I should say is that not only is it um barter, but each each party gets right of first refusal for spaces. For the others, so um, so you can just imagine, though, the complexity and given the fact that. Teachers may be using spaces during the day and rec is using them at night, there's just a lot, just like there is for other users of the space to just make sure in terms of. Making sure everyone's on the same page. If what if something breaks, you know, what am I allowed to use in the space? How should it be left? Custodial costs? So that's a very complicated um document. This one is much more straightforward.
And does this um dovetail in with things like after-school enrichment programs and other people using the facilities? Or is this specifically for rec?
Specifically for rec, but I think that the nice thing about it is that it lays out a set of ground rules, which will be applicable to. Other users of the space who perhaps also have not gotten clear guidance on expectations.
Yeah, that aligns well with what we're talking, we've been talking about in policy, for example, on building access and usage, so. Fill nicely with that. Thank you.
Yes, yes.
I'd like to move approval of uh the M O A transitioning base to the rec department.
I will second.
Okay, any further discussion? Andy, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Uh, Mariah?
Yes.
Donna?
I vote yes, and Bella has her hand up.
It's just to speak after you vote.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Suzanne?
Yes.
And I vote yes.
Thank you all very much.
If I might.
Of course.
Okay, I I'm just so fascinated by this conversation. As you know, I still play my clarinet, but it started out um. It through the Brookline, wh- what was the Brookline Music School and clearly that was subsumed. And it sounds like the the faculty at um the schools took it over and then.
No, it still exists. Music skip, as it still exists.
Oh, it still does. Okay, so I I just, so as a student of Runkle, I remember walking to Driscoll and then I had to go. And then I walked and then I took the T to devotion, um sorry, F R, now F of R. And then um and at some point I walked to the high school. I think we must have been pluckier then when we were little. But um, but anyway, I just wanted to appreciate the work that Ken and Tim have done. Along with you, Mariah, that those those co-curricular things that happen after school really are important and part of lifelong study. So I just to support everything that you did and just what a wonderful manifestation of um community, town and and schools. Um, such a positive light coming out of the discussions that were, you know, in the late spring. So just wow, and thank you.
Yeah.
Bella, thank you. I just want to say, um, and I look forward to meeting with you in person tomorrow, but uh um. I also took lessons at the Brookline Music School when I was a student at Runkle, and they also started at Runkle and then eventually. Made their way to what is now F R R, and I think that I would not, you know, have stuck with music if it weren't for the private teachers I had. In addition to being in chorus and band at at the schools. Um, and and then many years later, my daughter started in this in the program as it kind of more as it is now.
Yeah, can you believe we did all that walking on our own?
I think I got chilford once in a while, but uh but yeah, definitely did a lot more walking.
Yeah, anyway, thank you.
Can, Tim, when is your board meeting? When is the commission meeting?
Uh, the commission does not meet until uh the second week of August. Um, but they are very aware of this conversation and they have been looped in on the background.
Okay, I guess we probably, I I think it's important just for school committee to understand that obviously we want to make sure the community is well aware of this. And we've talked about um working with the town's PR to um put out a an announcement about this. But I think we probably need to wait until it's official, is that? I'm presuming, right, Tim?
Yeah, let me um, let me speak to to Clara. Obviously, we want to get the word out so people are comfortable, so they know coming up. Um, so let me just speak to my commissioner, see what she wants to do. I know it's just her signature that we need. As mentioned, our entire commission is in receipt of this draft. Um, so if there's any, you know, feedback, we would have heard it by now. Um, I know we've made some adjustments based on some some previous feedback. Um, so I will, I will keep you posted on timeline, but my my hope is very, very soon.
That'd be great. So yeah, just let us know and Val, you're signing it too, along with Bella, and then we'll. Get it over to you to rec for signature and that'll be great.
Thanks.
Yeah, Val, I had a quick question. Um.
On this?
Yeah, just a clarification, yeah, if possible.
Yeah.
Um, how, Tim, can you speak to the? The team that we met from base at school committee meetings like like in April or something like that? What's the status of that group? The like the? The team that was running base, are they being absorbed in recreation or is there some other change? There's no mention about it in the in the M L A. Right, I don't want to speak to specifics on individuals that we're looking um to bring in to rec, those are conversations we're having right now. But there'd be some involvement at some level from the professionals that have been with us to help with the transition. Yeah, thanks, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Um, our next item, we have no further information on, so we'll defer it for another. Meeting. Thank you, Tim, and thank you, Kenny. Uh, is there any new business? No new business. Bye, Kenny. Um, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back on that.
All right, Andy?
Yes.
Jessie?
Yes.
Donna?
Yes.
Mariah?
Mm-hmm.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Sarah?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
And I vote yes as well. Um, thank you very much and have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you.
Bye.